Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of December 3rd, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. For the record, Councilmember Fossey will be attending this evening's meeting remotely. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin, here. Councilmember Bader, here. Councilmember Ryan, here. Councilmember Vogel, here. Councilmember Fossey, here. Councilmember Tui, here. Vice President Zarlingo, here. President Schwab, here.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan to recite the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahobes people and their successors, the Tulalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty and their right to self-determination and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes to include a future that includes their voices, their stories, and their people for a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move to old business. Do I hear motion to approve the minutes for November 19th, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves.
Second.
Motion and second's been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader, yes. Councilmember Ryan, yes. Councilmember Vogel, yes. Councilmember Fossey, yes. Councilmember Tui, yes. Vice President Zarlingo, yes. President Schwab, yes.
Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, council and community. Just hope everyone had a wonderful holiday weekend, and we kicked off our Wintertide celebration right after Thanksgiving. And I just want to thank Tyler and Kari for their great work and the rest of the Public Works and Facilities team for decorating our downtown and making it festive. And I think everyone had a great time. And I encourage everyone to look at our website, visit everett.com/wintertide to see all the fun winter-themed events that are happening over the coming month. And no further comments, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, now it's time for public comment, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered the same in manners as oral persons. Submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence to make part of the official council record. And so, good evening, Angie. Let's start off with written comments.
Good evening, President Schwab. We received one written comment from John Martin regarding outdoor facility, and that was provided to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And we do have some individuals in chambers to speak.
Okay, do we have anyone online?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to our chambers.
We'll start with Kay. If you could please come to the podium, and please press the button on the mic, and please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Okay. I'm Kay Phanton, and I live in Snohomish, and I work for the Everett Public School Foundation. And I'm here first to give a heartfelt thank you to Paula Rhine, who generously was thinking of us with a grant with the COVID Relief Fund and for her unwavering support for our stuff the bus every August and helping us get backpacks for kids. But today, I'm here to tell you and share some of the results from the grant that you gave us. We had a $25,000 grant, and it was to support our early learning program. I've given you some handouts. The first handout is just a snapshot of Everett Public Schools. And I just wanted to call out, you know, 96.3% graduation rate is the all-time high last year for Everett Public Schools and one of the highest in the state of Washington. And so, we're really proud of that. So, I just wanted to share that. And then the next handout I have is about Play and Learn. I'm not going to go over, no dramatic reading, but I'm just going to share some little facts. So, Play and Learn is a free program that is for children birthed through five and their parents and caregivers. It's held five days a week at four locations, and it offers songs, art, play, removing barriers for families who maybe can't afford preschool or can't have the time to take them to a structured learning. So, it's the only program of its kind in all of Western Washington, and it aligns with the Everett Public School curriculum so that the students are more prepared when they're ready to start their academic career in school. Last year, we welcomed over 13,000 attendees in 167 sessions, and that included 500 new families that were able to get one step up on their starting to make sure their kids and the parents are helping them get ready for school. The other program that we've supported with these funds is our Everett Ready Program. And this is a transition program for all students who are going to be entering kindergarten. So, last year, there were 1,400 kindergarteners registered. And of those 1,400, over 1,100 attended are Everett Ready, which is a week before school starts. So, the program has them come. That's 81% of kindergarteners attended. And so, what it does is allows those kindergartners to come to school without the influence of what we call the biggs, the nervousness of having a fourth grader in the hall. So, we invite those families to come, and they get an opportunity to become familiar with the school campus, with the staff. They ride the bus, they get a snack, they learn how to use the recess swings and everything without any interference of other kids. They also get a chance for the staff and school and district to really look at where they are and what tools they need and to make sure that they're set up to succeed. And then there's also time for parents. So, first-time parents with kindergarten, you know, what paperwork do you need? What's it going to look like? How does this work? And so, what we have learned through this program is kids are more confident, and they're ready to just jump in that first day to learn. And we see a lot less tears on that first day from parents and from kids. And we haven't had to do the shifting with students. But because of the generous funds from the council and from the city of Everett, we were able to support that as it expands. And it's had a great impact for Everett Public students. The next page I have for you is just a little sheet that shows that impact you had. And I want you to focus on the grade three line. And so, that shows third-grade reading proficiency is powerful predictor of future income and lifelong success. It marks the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. So, students who are not reading at third-grade level are significantly more likely to drop out of school, and which limits their future earning potential, increases their reliance on public services. And if you look at this, Everett Public Schools' third graders are outperforming the state average in reading by over 14% and math by 13.5%. Your support that you gave us is helping make a difference with those, and we appreciate that. The last handout I have for you is just a little teaser for we changed up our annual event. It's going to be in March. We're having three. It's called the Big Showdown, the Big Give Showdown. There's three events. We'd like to see you all there. It's going to be a fun-filled event with school teams competing in a game show. We're going to have food trucks, we're going to have family activities. The community will be gathering at each of the high schools. So, you'll see more to come, but that comes up in March. And it's a new thing to not only shout out all the accomplishments in the district and all the great things happening, but also to bring the community together. So, I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, if Liz could please come to the podium. Please state your full name, city residence, and you have five minutes to speak.
Liz Stinning, Lake Forest Park. So, thank you, city council, for letting me speak for a few moments. I am the Director of the Downtown Everett Association, and I'm here to give you an update on our storefront enhancement program. And you have a handout here. I'm just going to read some Cliff Notes here and get you up to speed. Just so for some background, facade or storefront grants are an economic development strategy for many downtowns and main streets across the country. We researched several of these programs for examples when we launched the program in 2023. Our goal was, and still is, to support businesses and properties in improving the appearance of their storefronts. Now, three years later, more than 130,000 has been awarded to 38 businesses across downtown. So, how does it work? It's a competitive process where a selection group made up our some of our committee members and staff review applications. Once they're selected, the program is a 50-50 match with up to 5,000 awarded per project. So, for example, the total project is $3,000. We'll award them $1,500. What we found through all our tallying over the last three years is that for every dollar awarded, an estimated $4 is going back into the downtown. Funding was provided by generous city funding. The Everett Forum Grant 2023 helped launch the program, and council members Paula Rhine and Judy Tui have supported the program in the last two years. So, thank you very much. And then the Downtown Everett Association also provides funding through our Main Street Tax Credit donations. So, the program is popular, and it's competitive. This year alone, we had 35 applicants, and 14 applicants were selected. We granted at a total of $43,000, $45,000 with total projects costing close to $300,000. The projects are focused on high-impact visual curb appeal. So, think about exterior painting, lighting improvements, exterior signage, outdoor seating, awnings, et cetera. And at the end of the day, why does this program matter? For one, it lowers the barriers for costly renovations. And two, we're finding that businesses or properties, once they hear about the grant and they apply and they get selected, they're thinking about those wish list projects they have, like the awning at Sisters and the signage that they put out and the chairs. Those are projects that they want to do, but they need that little financial incentive to go for it. It's been stimulating hundreds of thousands of dollars in private investment and economic growth, and ultimately, it's creating a more walkable and vibrant downtown. So, our goal is to continue the program annually. We're going to be looking for grants, donations, any way that we can continue supporting the program at the level it's at and perhaps even building it up even more. So, I just wanted to thank you for your time and thank you for funding this program. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christina and Mike, could please come to the podium? And please state your full name, city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Christina Anderson. I'm with Courage to Change Recovery Services. This is Mike Kersey, the president of our board. We wanted to thank the council for giving us this grant from the COVID Relief Fund. The money specifically went to helping us with our overhead and paying our office rent. We are an Everett-based nonprofit. We have an emergency recovery shelter at the corner of Hewitt and Maple. And our main mission is emergency transportation for clients getting into detox and treatment. We have a 65% success rate in clients that were previously suffering from substance abuse and unhoused to stay sober while they're at next place and then go on to long-term housing or recovery housing. And Mike and his other driver drive about 8,000 miles a month. We have transported over 100 clients in the last 10 months. And during that 10-month period is where we were able to allocate those funds for our office rent. So, that's been a huge help in helping with our overhead. Our monthly budget is about $10,000 a month. And we have a 16-bed facility, two onsite managers, and we've served a little over 500 clients since we opened in December 2020. Do you have anything to add? No? Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our public comments.
Okay, thank you very much for your speakers. Let's go to, let's begin with Councilmember Bader.
Thanks, Council President. I was lucky enough to be able to go to National League of Cities meeting in Salt Lake City the week before last, and I guess teasing this one because I forgot my notes. So, next week, I'll bring more detailed report, but fascinating presentations on AI and data centers, civil discourse, and America's 250th, which we're about to, as we go into 2026, we'll be celebrating America's 250th birthday. Also took a trip by light rail out to the new stadium for it's the Utah Bees, their minor league baseball stadium. And I don't know if that's one you might have visited, Mayor, when you and others were looking at what we need to do here in Everett. But just an extraordinary facility to see what they've, and what's built up around there, too. So, pretty exciting to see what they've done and what I think, you know, ultimately could end up in our situation. So, anyhow, I'll bring more details next week. My apologies that I forgot my notes for this week, but I'll report in more in-depth next week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving and that your stretch pants worked out all right. This past Friday, my family and I were able to attend the tree lighting event in downtown Everett, and I just had so much fun. It was a very well-attended event, definitely the biggest crowd I've seen since we've started going. And Santa even joined by fire truck, which was really exciting. My kids were super thrilled to hear that Santa has a personal connection with Chief DeMarco. So, great job, Chief. I also wanted to give a shout out to our staff, particularly Tyler Chisholm and Kari Quas and all of the volunteers and staff of the cities, who not only helped with putting on the event the day of, but the planning that goes all year round to plan for it, setting up the barricades, the big tent, the tree with the quadrangle, and all of the things. So, kudos, and thank you so much for all your hard work on that. And I want to take this also as an opportunity to mention that Wintertide and all of the free, family-friendly City of Everett events that we have throughout the year are paid for by money collected from our city's lodging tax. And previously, these events had been funded through our general fund, but with the, and then the full capacity of our lodging tax was spent on grants for different types of events, but with constraints to our general fund budget due to the structural budget deficit. Mayor Franklin had recommended shifting funding for these city-sponsored events and staffing to come from our lodging tax fund instead. So, we can still have these events, which is fantastic, and the staff to put them on. Luckily, there's still money from our lodging tax to provide grants to tourism events in Everett. And as Chair of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, I'd be remiss if I didn't share a reminder that applications are currently open for our 2026 LTAC grant cycle. There's about $200,000 available for grants for events that promote tourism and overnight stays in the city. And because of the limited funds that LTAC has available this year, grant funding is going to be prioritized, will be prioritized for operational expenses only. So, grant applications that are requesting funding for marketing-only activities will not be considered and will be redirected to the county's TPA committee for consideration. So, please fill out your forms accordingly. Grants are due December 15th, and the committee will meet in the new year to mail them over. Yesterday, I attended the Everett Public Schools update. It was like the city, the state of the schools address. And it was, as Kay mentioned earlier, it was really incredible to hear about the amazing work that the Everett Public Schools is doing in our district to support student success, that they're outranking every other school district in Snohomish County and our top, and our near top in the state for student success and achievement, which is something we should all be really excited about. They do have two funding measures coming up on the February 10th ballot, a bond for some critical infrastructure work and also for school replacement projects, and also an educational levy renewal to support learning outcomes. The district shared that they would love to come to a council meeting to provide some more information to help inform voters. So, I think that would be an excellent opportunity, maybe in early January, for them to join and share some more. And then today, I trekked down to Seattle for the Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development District Committee meeting in person, and really appreciated seeing people in 3D, which was pretty cool, and to collaborate with other representatives on ways that Puget Sound Regional Council can support regional growth and development. Thank you so much to our presenters today. It was great to hear the updates on the good things that have come from the grants. I've been so pleased to see the results from both rounds of the storefront enhancement grants. It's definitely given our downtown the glow up that it needs. And looking ahead to the international soccer tournament this next summer and the proven results from this grant program administered by the DEA and the continued demand from small businesses, I believe we should have a third round of grants to support their ongoing work and supports for our downtown core, small businesses and economic development. So, with that, I'd like to make a motion to allocate $25,000 to the Downtown Everett Association from the city's previously allocated but unspent ARPA, or excuse me, COVID relief money for a third round of storefront enhancement grants. And I would love a second.
A second?
Oh.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second and further discussion.
Oh, Councilmember Vogel.
I imagine you've done your research, and that money is available, and we could say yes, so.
Yes, from, so the council has previously earmarked our COVID relief dollars for certain programs and projects. And I know, I see Jennifer with her finger hovered over the mute button if you wanted to add anything, but it's my understanding that there are programs where money has been earmarked, hasn't been fully spent. So, there would be funds available for funding this.
I think at the scale of 25,000, that's more than fair. Staff would, just as a matter of process, like to encourage this conversation in broader context, but it's council's right to consider something, you know, you can make a motion in time, right? And then to clarify, it would be a grant to the Downtown Everett Association, not a third round of storefront grants, because that's not legal under the COVID Recovery Fund requirements related to the general government fund.
Correct.
Councilmember Bader?
Thanks. Yeah, I guess, you know, not opposed to the idea, but I would appreciate more context or more and potential input from city staff. And I'm, but I'm also wondering, too, are we, I like what we do for downtown, but I also worried that, you know, are we, are we seeing, are we not doing enough for helping other businesses on Broadway or Evergreen or what have you? And so, just a little, I guess I'm, I'd be grateful for another week to think about this. But anyhow, my thoughts, thanks.
And I had a question. You said unspent dollars, is that from the council members' allocations? Or is this from?
From the broader funding pool.
Okay, and did we already allocate that in a budget amendment?
So, there is, we're working through the dollar-for-dollar line items, but I would say like broadly, there are unspent dollars from council allocations, both from folks who haven't made their final decisions and from council members who have allocated all of their dollars, but not all of the funds have been used.
I will be very clear, though, there are not a lot. So, an allocation of $25,000 might be achievable if you proposed $100,000 or $200,000. Like, we would have a lot of math to do. So, I just want to be clear, there are, you know, programs that are still spending down what has been allocated. So, there's certainly cobbled together $25,000, but we have allocated other dollars towards the structural budget deficit.
Yeah, biggest chunk you allocated as part of the 2026 budget balancing measures. There are programs that we felt certain we're going to use their funds, but they haven't to date spent their funds. So, there may be some that like we thought they're going to use every dime, but maybe they won't really, and they'll still achieve the objectives. And there may be others at a small scale that, where there is capacity. And there's like 150 grand of council money that you haven't spent yet.
Yes, that's the easy bill.
Okay, Councilmember Zarlingo?
Well, I guess I would second what Councilmember Bader said. I have not had a chance to look at this in advance and the trade-offs and some equity concerns about other parts of the city. So, I'd recommend a, I'd recommend waiting on this till at least next week.
Councilmember Vogel?
Being a budget thing, I love getting things done really quickly, but doesn't it need like three readings or something anyways? Or could it just, can it just be done?
I mean, I think this would be council direction to implement. It's not an actual ordinance. It would require a budget amendment later, and that would be an ordinance at that time.
I'm wanting to make sure about that. And yeah, I think it would also be great to have a week. I want to vote on it.
Only got three left, people.
Yeah, just for clarification, what allocated dollars would it be at a council unspent or other COVID dollars spent?
It would be from other COVID dollars that had previously been spent. But if council members would like to add to that, they're more than welcome. From their unallocated funds, they're more than welcome to add to the pot.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, any other discussion? There's a motion that's been seconded on the floor, on the, before us. Okay, with no further comments, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
I might vote yes later, but for right now, I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel? Yes. Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui? Yes. Vice President Zarlingo?
No, not for now.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, thank you for that. So, any, that was Councilmember Ryan's report. Do you have more?
That's all for tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Vogel?
Hello, welcome, everybody. I was at my last Alliance for Housing Affordability meeting. I told you a little bit, just recently, today at 4:30. I told you a little bit last time about the continuum of care dollars and how they are in great distress at this time. It will go... do, do, do. Paper notes. The federal government is trying to make it so that no more than 30% of the continuum of care dollars go for permanent supportive housing, which is the majority of the money that we get for continuum of care goes to that. So, there's a lot of issues with that. And I know that our housing folks and departments are well aware of what's going on. I just want to put that out there again, that it's still an issue. And so, like, for instance, 800 households approximately in the county would be affected, and that could be 800 households that become homeless again, that like because their rent won't be paid. And if their rent isn't paid, then, you know, they'll be evicted, and that puts a lot more money on, let's say, the sheriff's department, because they're the ones that do the evictions. And then, of course, all of the issues that go with disability, vulnerable folks out on the streets again. So, keep keep your advocacy boots on for finances, for housing and supportive services in our cities, town, and country. And just to let everybody know again, because I've been the Chair for that committee for a few years now. And so, the next person that will take it over, even just going to the Alliance for Housing Affordability meetings, AHA is a group of elected officials and staff who want to work together to understand the reality of affordable housing in Snohomish County and try to find actionable solutions. AHA is a great resources. It's a great resource. It helps legislative bodies make data-driven policy decisions. And it's amazing getting almost all of the different cities and towns within Snohomish County into a small little, you know, computer room to talk about, you know, like, we are Everett, and we've got 112, 15,000 people here. And then there's Woodway, I can't remember how much, but they are very small, and they have absolutely no retail. Let's, for instance, you know, so just the different capacities of the different jurisdictions coming together, council members, mayors, and staff. It's been a really, it's been an honor to work in that capacity. And yeah, that's what I got to do today. And so, good luck and Godspeed with the next person that gets to be on that committee. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Fossey?
Hi. Hello, everyone. I apologize that I can't be there today. I really wanted to for some of the speakers that were coming to share what some of the COVID relief dollars that the council members were able to allot out, the impacts that they're having on the community and different programs and the things being done. I'm down at Committee Days in Olympia for a couple of days. And so, sadly, I had to miss Courage to Change come and talk about some of their important work that they do in services and especially transportation, which is often overlooked, in supporting folks in their recovery journey. So, I was very glad to dedicate the 15,000 to them because that was very much needed services. And it was great to hear about some of the allotments that Councilmember Ryan put out there and some of the impacts that that had on the community. So, I just wanted to thank everyone that came tonight to speak and to share with our community the important work that they're doing and where some of these dollars have gone and the results of them. It's really nice to hear, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tui?
Oh, yeah. Last week, I was, I attended the Council of Neighborhoods meeting, and we had a really great presentation by the Everett Public Schools about the upcoming construction bond and education levy coming up on February 10th. And just reminded again tonight how strong our Everett School District is and how important that is for economic development. When people go to move somewhere, they always, first thing, young parents look at our schools as well as businesses. So, I thank them for all their hard work and their great successes. And hopefully, things will be positive on February 10th. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Zarlingo?
Well, just... Well, just one report. Last week I attended the last meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Ad Hoc Committee on Board Representation. So this is something that happens every few years where there's a, an effort to reexamine the way the community is represented on the Puget Sound Regional Council, which directs a whole lot of things that affect us in all of the cities in the four county area, the fast growing cities. And anyway, concluded that group's work made recommendations to the executive board and kind of ensuring fair representation, especially for cities like Everett, and I appreciate the graciousness of Seattle that continues not to claim one seat that they would otherwise have, so that that can, can hopefully ensure we don't end up with kind of an uneven, a skewed thing with respect to the populations. There's a lot of that that goes on around here. So happy the way that worked out. And that's it for me.
Thank you. So I attended the Ball of Our Blessed Neighborhood meeting this last week. And thanks to the police chief and the staff, they, there's a lot of conversation about the flock cameras and the, and traffic speeds, of course. And then also there's a lot of discussion, of course, that neighborhood on the Edgewater, Edgewater Bridge project. And just for, just as a reminder, the, there was a slight delay in the actual beginning of the bridge from the original goals. But once it got started, there really was only just one delay announcement and we're still on track for that. There's also a website dedicated to that. You can, you can search it up pretty easily. And there's also now a webcam. So you can see the progress of the, of the bridge. And also we'll make some announcement, but there was, there was a tradition when the bridge was built, that communities of Muckleteal and Everett met in the middle and had a little celebration. So hopefully we'll be able to kind of reenact that again with our new bridge. Also, my son and I, we volunteered the VOA food pantry on Casino Road. And just, just kind of give you an update on that. It was moving. There, once a week on Casino Road, there's two locations. And you, it's just, well, just a look up on site. There's not a big application process. Whoever shows up. Unfortunately, they do run out very quickly. On the Tuesday, we were there at 14 Casino. It was a walk-in, walk-up and they had 106 boxes prepared and we gave them away in less than two hours. Also, something I learned was that, because I talked a little bit about the SNAP program and how it affects families and the potential loss of funding for that project, but it really started during COVID, that need, the big need, and it hasn't gone down. It's just continually increasing. So I wanted to report that. So thank you for that. Let's move it on to our city administration report. Jennifer, do you have a report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. And how about David Hall, our city attorney?
We're asking for a 10-minute executive session to discuss two matters pursuant to RCW 423110. One, I, with potential council action to follow on one of those matters.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So let's move on to our consent items. There are eight of them on our agenda. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Bader moves the consent items, one through eight.
Second motion.
Uh, motions been made and second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay. We'll move on to item number nine. We still have an open public hearing. Council Bill 2511-66, second reading, adopt a ordinance renewing the expanding the downtown Everett Business Improvement Area for 2026 and 2030. We'll have a final reading and a closing of the public hearing December 10th. Angie, are there any members that wish to speak on this item?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Is there any council report or any other new information from administration? Okay. Well, the count, the hearing will remain open once again until December 10th. All right. So move on to our proposed action items. There are several. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and yeah, just those. So at this point, I'll just pause for a minute. Actually, we have all the way up to.
26.
26. So I think instead of asking if we could just pause for a moment, you could just look through those real quick just to refresh from my council position. Are there any questions on any of our proposed action items? There are second readings. So I'll give a moment for everyone to look through those.
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Uh, just as a public service announcement, most all of these 17 items are closing of projects that have happened. So not big talk points, but really fantastic that the city has been able to accomplish things for the good of the people.
And we'll have one more opportunity to, if you have questions or comments, our third and final reading for these will be December 10th. So hearing none, so we'll move on to item number 27, without objection. And this would be the first reading, Council Bill 2511-82, first reading amending ordinance relating to closing a special improvement project entitled Everett Smelter Drainage, third and final reading, December 17, 2025. Are there any council questions on item 27? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 28, Council Bill 2511-83, first reading, adopt a ordinance, closing a special improvement project entitled WFP Air Scour Blower Building Replacement, third and final reading, December 17, 2025. Any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the next one. Item number 29, Council Bill 2511-84, first reading, adopt a ordinance, closing a special improvement project entitled Citywide Bicycle Wayfinding, third and final reading, December 17, 2025. Are there any questions from council on item number 29? Yes. Councilmember Vogel.
Just a comment, and I'm just really glad that this is able to be closed and citywide bicycle finding is fantastic. Being at the TAC meeting last month, just talking about being able to get from, let's say, Madison to, and this I don't think is this particular wayfinding one, but I'd have to look at it again. Getting from Madison up to the college, not having to go on Evergreen Way or turning into Rucker, you know, which could take 40 minutes at 3:30 in the afternoon, takes 20 minutes on your bike going. Yeah. So it's just, it's fantastic that the city of Everett is working to improve differing mobilities to get around the city. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from item number 29? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to item number 30, which potentially includes a briefing. Council Bill 2511-85, first and second reading, adopt a ordinance establishing the basic salary schedule for employees of the city of Everett for 2026. Third and final reading will be December 10, 2025. Well, good evening, Candy.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So as Council President Schwab just said, I'm here to do the first and second reading of the ordinance establishing the 2026 salary schedule for all city employees. The salary schedule outlined in this ordinance is for all union represented employees affiliated with AFSMI, crafts and ATU. We are still in negotiations with EPOA, EPMA and IFF. So the wages that are contained in this schedule reflect 2025 wages. And we will bring those to you as part of the collective bargaining process when those, when the bargaining is completed. This ordinance does also include wages for non-represented employees at a 2.7% COLA, which is the same as AFSMI and crafts. We have a, a past practice of providing the same COLA to our non-represented employees as what we do for AFSMI and crafts, not only for compression issues, but also for management and growth opportunities for them as they do sometimes go from union employee positions to management positions. So we try to maintain that, that compression. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm looking right at you.
Councilmember Vogel.
I love that about you. And I also very much appreciate that you offered to get in touch with me about this particular item before it was tonight. And I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you.
Uh, I do appreciate the work and everything that y'all. I have learned a lot over the years. And so I appreciate that you are bringing this forward. You have to, you have to bring it forward. I appreciate that you're asking me specifically, but I don't have anything for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks. More of a procedural question. I assume we're doing the first and second reading at one time because the end of the year draws an eye?
That is correct.
Okay.
So that we can get the salary schedule in place in January.
Yeah, good comment. And please make sure if you have any more questions, focus on this for the next week or so, we can have that since it is near the end of the year.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. We'll move on to, we have an action item tonight, item number 31. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance, creating a special improvement project entitled Evergreen Way Drainage Improvements. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, the motion.
Okay. Motion second's been made. Are there questions from council or comments? Okay. Seeing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey? Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay. And so we'll go into executive session, the last 10 minutes, plus one minute travel time. The last 10 minutes, plus one minute travel time. Okay, we, oh, we have one more. We're, we're done with executive session. We're doing a move forward here. We have a quorum and we have a potential motion. And I'll refer to David Hall.
We're hoping for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement to settle a worker's compensation claim by former firefighter Jason Hague in the amount of $183,470.
Okay, move to approve.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay. No further comment. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. And with no further business, meetings adjourned.